All right, it is 5:00. We'll start the meeting. According to, it is a special emergency city council meeting at 5:00 Thursday, May 7, 2020. Minnesota Statute 13D dash, or dot 021 allows meetings to be conducted over the phone or other electronic means under the following conditions. Number one, the mayor determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under Section 13D dot 02 is not practical because of a health pandemic. Two, the mayor and all councilors participating can hear one another and can hear all discussion. Three, attendance by the public is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the meeting unless unfeasible to do so. And number five, all votes must be conducted by roll call so each member's vote can issue, can be identified and recorded. So this is a special emergency meeting, so the only items that will be considered today is going to be what's on our agenda, which is two items. The first item is to consider ordinance number 38 of the fifth series and number 34 of the fifth series necessary for implement preservation for public health. And the second item that we will be considering today is to consider and certify COVID-19 preparedness plans by the departments and authorize signatures. With that being said, we'll move right into the first item on our agenda, which is considering ordinance number 38 of the fifth series, which is the emergency, the amending the emergency order. I don't believe any of us had any issues with the emergency order. I believe that the conversation that we wanted to have was regarding ordinance 34 of the fifth series. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, council members? The, the-
I'm trying to find it here.
Ordinance number 38 is just basically saying that the city is using, granting the authority of the city council during an emergency time. Section, or ordinance number 34, the fourth, fifth series, is the item which is what we put in place, which we have restaurant, food courts, cafes, coffee houses, and other places of public accommodation offering prepared food for curbside only, curbside delivery and drive-through service only. So those are what we still have in place. And I believe it was two weeks ago, we released the grocery stores, delis, convenience stores, gas stations from the unpackaged air items and the self-serve beverages. So with that being said, this was brought up by Councilor Kraus, so I will allow him to make an argument on if we should modify, change at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you pointed out, ordinance number 38, fifth series, City of International, sorry, you're right. Ordinance 34, fifth series, necessary for immediate preservation of public health. Section one, I just wanted to have a discussion as to whether or not we wanted to continue that. The governor's stay-at-home order is not as stringent as the stay-at-home, as this order that we put in place. As per the governor's ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 20-04, allows for restaurants, food courts, cafes, coffee houses, and other public accommodations to be open, staff can be in the building, and no more than five members of the public. And we effectively have that closed. The only issue I take with that is, in conversations with Deputy Director Bergstrom, we, that essentially closed Subway and a couple other restaurants, like I don't believe Sandy's is open, whether they would or not is inconsequential in my opinion. I just, I'm just wondering if we should lift the more stringent restrictions that we placed on the businesses which go above and beyond the governor's order? That's my only question.
Any other council discussion on that? Councilor Deitch, do you have any items to add to that, or concerns, or?
Just reading what came out today that Ken put out, dealing with the spread of the virus and public contact, and it referred to the beaches more so, but it goes to the general public and businesses also. I guess I would like to leave it as it is.
Okay. Councilor Nelson, I did allow two people to come on to the call, and I didn't catch names, one was a phone number. Councilor Nelson, are you on the line? Councilor Buller, do you have any thoughts on this?
I guess I would probably agree with Jolie on this. I think our businesses are hurting bad enough already, and if they're willing to support that type of directive and monitor it, and I would support Jolie on opening it up to the original, take our restrictions off.
Okay. And that's fine, and I am more than willing to accept a motion to, to release that action. With that being said, though, I, my concern is, is this. I do know that we do have one business that has made the choice to close, and that was Subway. I don't think we need to mention businesses specifically, but they did make the choice, and they did have the ability to do curbside and do pickup, as all of the other businesses in town have been able to do as well. One of the concerns that I have, and we actually have the president of the Chamber of Commerce on the, on the call too, one of the concerns that I've been having is the governor did open up more businesses to doing curbside. Basically, our whole downtown district has the opportunity at this point to open up to do curbside. And with that being said, there are some issues that are coming along with it, as in, now that they're doing curbside, they're open, and they're allowing customers to come into the business as well. How, how are we going to enforce curbside, or, you know, when we have, some of our businesses can have curbside delivery, some of our smaller businesses, like restaurants, now can do takeout. I think one of the more interesting things of what we have done proactively before the rest of the state is we went to curbside and not allowed people to come into the businesses, and now we have more businesses that are allowed to do curbside. It seems like we have a pretty play, fair playing field right now, and how do we, how do we manage five people in a building, as Councilor Kraus had brought up? I mean, are we going to have police officers to go into the business? Are we going to do spot checks on the businesses to see who has the right amount of customers? And how do we, how do we gauge customer flow? I mean, we came up with a preparative plan today, that's our next item of business, on how we're going to institute things to be moving forward in the direction to be safer for our employees and for who our employees interact with. By, by changing this, I, it just seems like we are not asking those businesses to, I don't know the words that I want to put together, it's just, it seems like this one is a little bit too soon. We still have bars that are not able to be open, and we also have restaurants that, 99% of our restaurants in town are able to comply. We have one that chose not to do curbside. And at this time, I am going to open up the floor to the President of International Policy Chamber, and if she has any thoughts to add to this conversation. Tricia.
Thank you, Mayor Dova. I, I do have some thoughts, because we know this is, you know, this whole situation in time is so unprecedented, and our businesses are doing the best, I mean, they can through this, and frustration is what is going to be the killer. Like, the longer and the more that this is, especially in the bars, restaurants, those who are even able to pay that $10,000, that, that, that is not, that's a little Band-Aid, that isn't a, that doesn't save them, right, in the long term, and especially ongoing. So, you know, the, with a lot of the calls that I've been on, when we're talking with businesses, or working with the State Chamber, or the US Chamber, and things like that, and the sensitivities that some of them have, and when it comes to be it literal or figurative policing, is really what is, what is being asked, I would say, of you to do that. Like, who, like, I don't see that coming down from the state level of where, you know, they're, they're kind of dealing with certain things, or, I mean, I don't know, that's just, that's a variable out there. It's being handled differently in different states, it's being handled differently within states and different communities, and I think a part of that is, you know, to the council to consider, like, what, what, what do you want to take on, on that? It's a little bit of people kind of working it out, a part of it is monitoring, like, where it goes. Like, I just wouldn't advocate for too much. It's the same with the, with the, with the boat ramps, right? Like, nobody's there with a clipboard, like, where did you drive from, who are you, how are you here? As people are recreating and moving around, like, why would we impose that on business?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Can I add to that?
Please.
Again, you know what, and I agree with that, I guess, to figure how we're going to police it, I don't necessarily know that the police officers are pulling people over and asking if what they're doing is, is necessary. As far as coming in contact with people, Mr. Mayor, you work in a grocery store, I was in there the other day, that place was packed. I mean, I mean, there's, people are coming in contact with each other, I guess. My, my fear is that, I guess it's not a fear, I wonder what happens on, on Sunday, the 17th, at 11:59 PM, when the current order expires? I know that we have a meeting that day, but what if the, what if the order does expire and we go back to normal, but then we're going to leave our businesses with a, with a day? I don't see it necessarily happening that way, but then we would leave our businesses until we meet to be able to, to open back up or do what they have to do. I just, I just don't know that it's necessarily smart of us to be more restrictive than what the governor's order is, considering the minuscule number of cases we have per capita. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, just to add-
Can I ask something?
I just want to clear up one of the things that Councilor Kraus had just mentioned. Our emergency ordinance ends when the governors, when the governor allows restaurants and bars to open back up. So ours immediately is over as soon as the stay-at-home order would end, so. Councilor Buller.
I think if we're looking at the policing part of it, and, and I think the businesses are going to be honored, or happy to be open, and are going to watch it. If we're looking at policing and that part of it, I think our preparedness plans that we have in all our departments, if we're leading up to the employees to make sure that they're policing themselves and taking care of it too, and supervisors making sure that they're policing them. So I, I think we've got to look at that in the same way with the stores.
Okay. Well, the, please.
Can I add one more thing?
Yep, yep.
I think so much of all of this, in what I would just generically call a time of confusion, is all about education and communication. And that is where I would rather see efforts go of trying to help people either understand or implement what it is that they need to do, before it escalates into any level of literal or figurative against police. So I think that if we, you know, we're, we're at the chamber, are trying to provide resources and reach out to businesses who are open, and circling back with them when they are, and creating opportunities to discuss, like, what's working, what isn't, what support do you need, like, do you have your signage, do you have your preparedness plan in place? You do that because these business owners have the sensitivity to the service and the environment that they're providing and working in. Like, when I'm, I share on the call, it was on earlier today, that when I'm, you know, talking with these business owners, they of course do not, you know, they, they have their own tendencies, as much as they want to open, and sensitivities to making sure that they are putting their staff in a safe environment, number one, and then number two, are creating a safe space for their customers. They don't want to see a business that becomes an issue, or has, right, like, contributes to the problem in any way. There, I believe for the most part, right, people, I've found through different things, like, they want to be compliant. There's always some renegades in life, on whatever it is, right, of who's going to push the boundaries and kind of stretch things that way, and, you know, if, if the balance act is always chasing the one, or am I kind of managing, you know, monitoring and just kind of hurting the best that we can of others, knowing that that just may be, that it's, you know, so I think, you know, just really helping educate and provide resources to them to do that, to be open as is, but some of the discussions I've heard from the state, is they're also not just going to say, okay, we're open and it's done. I mean, this is going to be still, like the retail, like a phased opening, like, you can start here, and then you can go here, and then you can open there, and, you know, there's a lot of discussion right now about the whole restaurants and bar level, and, you know, I don't, I don't want to over, you know, so some of the restaurants have decided, right, it wasn't feasible for them, they would, it would hurt them more financially to be open in a limited capacity than they could if they just closed it off, right? And so depending on what and how they're allowed to open is a little bit of that same. So the restrictions that come, and that's where, you know, Chamber Lady's a free-market girl, right? Like, it's all going to kind of work it out, that, you know, as businesses are allowed to, to open, they will make that decision based upon the requirement, if their own business can open at that requirement level, and they might say, that doesn't work for me. So, you know, some states have opened restaurants in limited capacities, and restaurants might determine and say, look, that, you know, a 25% capacity, a 30% capacity is not still economically feasible for me, based upon, you know, the amount of food and things that I need to buy, like, to manage, and what it looks like, how that's going to move out, that they may choose to the next phase to wait to open, and so there's, there, I think there's kind of, you know, and, and the public will drive a little bit as well, like, as businesses open, is, you know, that doesn't necessarily, there will be the people who will go, but, you know, I don't expect a big rush anywhere of anybody yet. I think that too will kind of be phased in in its own, as people are more comfortable re-engaging once again in commerce.
Can I just ask you one pointed question then, and I guess it is the crux of what we're actually discussing today? Do you think that there is a risk versus reward at this point for the city to open up takeout so customers can physically go into the restaurant and pick up an ordered meal over curbside, where the employee comes out and does the transaction outside of the biz, the building? Because that's really the crux of what we're discussing today, is whether we should allow customers to go into restaurants and, and pick up food over curbside.
You know, that, personally, like, I, I have a difficult time differentiating based on other retail and commerce activities happening. If I can go, I mean, I'm spending usually less time if I pre-ordered, as most are with takeout, some might show up and be willing to wait, and so that could be, you know, but I think the restaurants are going to look to manage that in regards to protecting their staff, with who's around, and how many people, and stuff like that. But if I can go spend 20 minutes inside a grocery store, or an open retailer, that, where I can go inside and wander the aisles and gather my things, versus what may be like a less than 10-minute pickup transaction in there, seems like it shouldn't increase the risk that much.
Okay.
They're not, like, you know, because they're not really going deep into the restaurants usually, right? Like, they're just going to kind of counter and leave, and if that allows, I don't know if it's easier or not on the staff, I mean, I think it's really more about the actual cash transaction, or financial, whether it's cash or card, or however they're signing or doing, it's really been more about what they do. So I've kind of watched how some of the restaurants doing the pickup are doing that, and I've, admittedly, when I've done my own takeout, I've just paid by the card over the phone, so I just grabbed it and went, but if I'm doing a cash transaction back and forth, I mean, that's, I'm either making that staff member run, they're still having interaction with the customer, just run inside, outside, or the customer can just go in and grab it.
See, and the concerns that I've had from the very beginning is customers having more communication and customers for conversation with additional customers, waiting inside, waiting for their food, and this way, people are staying in their vehicles, and that was the, the original intent of what we had done. So, all right, we've had a lengthy discussion.
As I understand it, I think some people may still choose wait, yep.
What was that?
Oh, I was saying that, you know, the option could still be there, and there are some people might say, I, I choose curbside, right? Like, so I was giving you my card, just run it out to me, I still don't want to go in your restaurant, even though you're saying that I can. And others, right, may, may go in.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, we've had a lengthy discussion on this. I will, the chair would entertain a motion to either amend, because at this point, we only have the one section, or remove the section or modify, but I'll leave that up to the will of the council. So the chair would entertain a motion on ordinance, emergency ordinance 34 of the fifth series at this time.
I guess I would move that we remove section one. Let's take it to a vote and see what happens.
Okay. So we have, I would just ask if you could change your motion to just rescind ordinance 34, since that's the only section left on it?
Okay, so I would, yeah, I would amend the motion to rescind ordinance 34 of the fifth series.
Okay.
38.
34.
34 is the old one, it was changed, the existing one is, so this language is in 38, so it's actually 38.
It is actually 38, I apologize. It's together as one.
It is 38.
Okay. So I understand your motion would be to rescind ordinance number 38 of the fifth series.
Yes, that'll work.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilor Buller.
Councilor-
Do we have a second, or do we have any discussion? Well, just, just so everyone knows, I more likely, well, I'm just not comfortable with that at this point. I, I understand that we are slowly but surely moving up, but for me, I don't, I don't see how, personally, if we have a lot of our downtown businesses, and our mom and pops that are open and they're running curbside, the food establishment that have been running curbside for the past six weeks, I think that they can continue in that capacity, and I do know we have at least one business in our community that feels that they cannot operate under curbside, and I, I am pained because of that. However, I still think that as our other smaller businesses in our community are moving to curbside, the businesses that have been doing curbside for the past six weeks can continue on, so I will be voting no on this, but I respect our other councilors' opinions on this too. As we move forward in all of our stuff with COVID-19, and how we're going to be moving forward as a community, I think we're going to have a lot of split decisions, but we're all moving forward in the same direction as a, as a community, so I do respect my other city councilors that are going to be voting in other ways. So if anyone has any other discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilor Deitch here.
Yes.
Um, okay, who's speaking?
You are.
Okay. All right, it sounded like somebody else was also. I'm going to vote no also, and we have a lot of vulnerable elderly adults. If you drive around town, you see many of them, if they have to go out, and most of them don't, if you see many adults outside are driving around, the elderly, they've got a face mask even in their car, and they may not go into these establishments, but it may be what's carried by other people to their area, their home, the grocery store next to them, whatever it may be. My wife and I, we own a group home with four vulnerable adults in it, they're not allowed to leave the group home. They can't go anywhere, and anytime that we happen to take them out for a drive, everybody wears face masks, and we practice social distancing even in the house. I mean, I think we're just opening something up. If you look at Grand Rapids, Minnesota, they went from basically zero of anyone that had the virus, and if you watch, they're multiplying daily in Grand Rapids, Minnesota, which is only 100 miles away. It's just a matter of time before it comes here, as we all know, and I don't want to promote that. Anyway, as I say, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing done.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on this section.
Please.
My, my question is, okay, so as I read this, as I read section one of the ordinance, it says restaurants, food courts, cafes, coffee houses, and other places of public accommodation offering prepared food. So does that mean that certain gas stations can't offer their prepared food, because that's how that reads? And there's a gas station that's got a restaurant inside of it, how does that, how does that fit? Because they're open.
But that's one of the issues that we had when we originally wrote this, is the item two, the gas stations, was having all foods prepackaged, and we relieved that. A gas station at this point is still a, a gas station is essential services to be open to the public. So-
Other places of public accommodation offering prepared food, that would be a gas station, they'd be an other place of public accommodation.
Well, and they, they were given the-
It's, it's fine, we're, we're-
But they were given the, to be completely honest with you, they were also given the ordinance and told that they had to do curbside delivery as well. So that, that conversation was given to the, to the business owners when we passed the 34th, or the ordinance number 34, they were given that information at that time. So, and they, I do believe-
I agree.
I do believe they were also given, they have also blocked off their service area with a six-foot barrier, so that customers are not right at the counter, and they're picking up their food on the other side of the, the counter as well. So, all right, if there's no other discussion, I will call the question. Councilor Deitch?
No.
Councilor Nelson? Absent. Uh, Councilor Kraus?
Aye.
Councilor Buller?
Aye.
And I will vote no. It will fail on a 2-2 vote, with Councilor Nelson being absent. We will put this again on our, our next regular city council meeting, that way we can have a full vote with our full council on this particular issue. Next, we will-
Thank you.
Next, we will go to the preparative plans by our departments. The first one that we will be looking at will be from the administration. Administrator Anderson, do you want to go through the preparative plans?
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, what we presented for council consideration is a preparedness plan that's been prepared by the department heads. It hasn't been revised, it's, so it's as they've presented it for their respective departments. And again, the reason, primary reason for having these is to exercise some best management practices at trying to mitigate the potential for becoming positive for COVID-19 diagnoses, and trying to protect and minimize the exposure- and minimize the exposure that our employees are going to be confronted when they're performing their essential work functions, and at the same time, still have a system in place where we can perform our work as efficiently as possible and maintain our productivity. So each department head used the template that was provided by the state of Minnesota to develop these preparedness plans. And the first one that we would ask you to consider, and I guess the action that we're asking the city council is to, you know, really look at these, review them. If there's, if there's specifics in each respective plan that you're uncomfortable with, you know, we should have a conversation with them and modify them to something that the council is comfortable with. But I think what we would like to do, and what I would like to see, is that the council essentially acknowledge the preparedness plans and adopt and approve them, and then furthermore authorize the mayor and myself, as well as the respective department heads, to sign their preparedness plans, so that there's a clear message to the employees and to the public that we're trying to promote safety in our public facilities, safety for our, to the extent that we can for our employees, that every employee, including management, as well as the worker bees, recognize that we all have a personal responsibility for our own protection, as well as the protection of our other employees. And that hopefully is laid out sufficiently in these preparedness plans. So I'm asking that the council, you know, review those and pass a motion to essentially approve and acknowledge them, so we can move forward and have a, as much as possible, some continuity in our plans moving forward, because I expect this, to one extent or another, and it changes on a day-to-day basis, but have some continuity in our plans citywide. So...
All right. The first one that we have before us is the administration office. I read through this one. I didn't see any issues. I would ask if any of the, well, first of all, Betty, do you have anything to add to this whatsoever?
Thank you, Mayor. No, just that when we had first put them out, the dates on, you know, the last pages are, you know, would be updated accordingly, but nothing of substance to change, no.
Okay. Counsel, does anyone have any concerns on the preparative plan for the administration office?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I don't have a concern. I'm just asking if the thermometers have arrived.
Uh, yes, they have. Yep, yes, they have.
Mayor, if I could just elaborate in response to that.
Perfect.
I'd just like to elaborate a little bit, Counselor, in response to that. They did come today. They were scheduled to come on Wednesday. The fire chief received them. They will be distributed to the department heads. And one of the items that I've included in your packet, and I had some discussion in my cover memo, is that each of these plans were prepared before we confirmed that we were going to be able to have, we're uncertain about when we were going to get them. Didn't know if there was back orders on them, but we have them. So the elements of each of these plans that you're going to consider as you move forward, department to department, don't really include how these are going to be used. But I've identified in my cover memo something that I would like to have be used as a supplement for each department's plan. And in addition to, and basically, the department heads can do screening as people come in for their individual shifts. They can do it if somebody has some symptoms, and they become symptomatic for that, then use that as a tool to determine if they are potentially positive, and then determine if they need to go home. Of course, their own physical, how they feel, are they coughing, or they have shortness of breath, you know, those are things, are they flush in the face, need to be considered as well. That's laid out in this memo. The other piece that I included and that I would envision would be an attachment to each of the preparedness plans, is the health screening questionnaire for city hall and public facilities, employees and visitors. And I included that at the beginning of your packet as well, and that can be a supplement to each department's plan as well.
So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to, please?
Mayor, if I may, then with that information, I do have a question, because, so if I screen somebody and they're running a fever, we can send them home. How long are we sending them home for? Are we sending them home for two weeks, like the COVID, you know, quarantine two weeks? Are we sending them home for one day? What is the protocol, then, as a department head, on how to go further, further with that step?
Okay. I just want to verify, did all of the councilors hear the question that was just asked by Deputy Administrator Berksrum? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thoughts on that, please? Ken?
Mayor, I believe the best practices is if you have a positive indication for a temperature that exceeds 100.4 degrees, that you would consult with a medical provider, go home and try and isolate yourself, and then consult with a medical provider via phone, and not go directly to the office and consult with them, and make arrangements for appropriate testing if they determine that that's necessary. But, and typically, that would happen if you have that, as well as the shortness of breath and some of the typical symptoms for COVID-19. It is possible where people will be feverish and not be positive, but the next step would be is to consult with your, leave the workplace, try and isolate yourself, and consult with your medical provider.
Okay. And then would we need something from their medical provider saying that they can come back to work, or?
If it was an employee, I would say yes.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, please. Councilor Deitch?
Councilor Deitch, I know our protocol that we use at our facility over here, and it's a state guideline that we use for group homes, if one of the employees has a temperature, they must go home and have their temperature. Ours is 99 point something. Have a temperature, without temperature for three days before they're returning to work. I think there's a couple of different guidelines out there, but it doesn't have to be really dramatic. As I say, ours is three days with no temperature after the first temperature.
And I find that interesting that you say that, too, Councilor Deitch, because I'm looking at the, the health screening questionnaire for the city hall employees. Number two, have you been in close contact with someone who has been diagnosed, or have you had symptoms within three days? So I guess that is kind of one of the, so, okay. Anyway, any other questions that we have regarding the attachment that the administrator had spoke about, or specifically the preparative plan for the administration office? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the preparative plan for the administration office, along with the attachments outlined by the city administrator.
So move, Councilor Deitch?
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by-
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Deitch. We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson, absent. Councilor Kraus? Councilor Buller? And I'll vote yes. Motion carries four, zero. Thank you. Next, we will go to, I'm sorry, next we will go to the City of International Falls Fire Rescue EMS. Did the council have any concerns with that? And Chief Manassa is also on the line, so you can ask questions of Chief Manassa. In fact, Chief Manassa, do you have anything that you'd like to outline in your, your preparative plan?
I don't at this time. Other than shift staggering and stuff like that, didn't really affect our department, being that we have to be available all the time. So we did make changes, some changes to social distancing and disinfecting of the fire hall. But again, as far as shift staggering and stuff like that was not really an option for how we operate. So a lot, not a lot, has changed in our department, other than some patient care protocol, some stuff that went into effect regardless of how we do the back-to-work order. I shouldn't say back-to-work order, we're at work, but our safety protocols for, for this.
Right. Chief, I went through it, and I found it interesting as I was reading each one of our departments, and I think we have to be very knowledgeable, that each one of our departments offers an entirely different mission in how we interact with the public, how we interact with each other. But there were some common things that I had saw through the different city plans. And one of the things that I had noticed that was missing in the social distancing section of your plan is midway through, it says employees are encouraged to spread out in the station, remaining six feet apart when possible. And then it goes through, but I didn't see anything on how we would handle a situation if we had two employees driving in the ambulance up front, or if we had firefighters going somewhere. Just help me, is there already safety protocols of masks, or something that would be in place for our employees when they're forced to be together inside vehicles?
We could put one employee in the front, one in the back, although I would not be very enthusiastic about masks on drivers of emergency vehicles driving, I'm going to say code three. Again, our safe, our best safety for our providers is putting a mask over the protector, or proposed patient. That is our best protection. We are screening our employees prior to entering their shift, so we are assuming that when they start their shift, that we're clearing them to work and they're in a healthy state. So I guess I don't have a very good comment for you, other than we're making our assumptions that riding in the vehicle is not, not going to affect them. Like I said, we will try our best to maintain social distancing in the fire hall and increase our disinfecting, but, yeah.
Okay. And the reason I ask that specific question is, and I want you to be completely understanding of my somewhat ignorance of how an ambulance system works, or how the fire system works. But as I was reading through the public works, preparative plan, if they have two employees that are going to be going to one particular location, masks would be worn inside the vehicle. So we're not so much worried about the, the patient that would be in there. It would be who's been at, you know, at the grocery store and bringing it back into, bringing the possible virus back into the city vehicles. I guess what my issue is, is if, if the medical side, which is our ambulance, isn't going to do that, are you suggesting we shouldn't have to do that for our public works in the front of a vehicle if we're testing all of them to come to work in the same day?
I'm not suggesting that. I would say each department head has a thought or responsibility on how their staff is handled in their working situations. For mine, I don't feel it's safe to have a mask on. That could impede vision and/or radio communications if needed while responding to a scene or a call.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that for me. So at this time, unless anyone else has questions for Chief Manassa? All right. Then the chair would entertain a motion to accept the preparative plan for the Falls Fire Rescue EMS, along with the attachments that were referenced earlier by the city administrator.
Councilor Buller, I shall approve.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Councilor Buller to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson, absent. Councilor Kraus? Councilor Buller? And I will vote yes. Motion carries four, zero. Next, we have the Falls Library Plan that was outlined. I don't believe we have Diane Adams, our librarian, her head librarian, on. With that being said, she did give us a pretty good update on Monday of this week on how they're looking at moving forward, along with this. Does anyone have any questions that maybe the city administrator or I could answer on this? Hearing none, the only thing that I would like to add to this particular plan, along with all of the other plans I had noticed, we mentioned Sandy Creek for mental health for our employees moving forward. I would just like to add one line on there with the ability to call Sandy Creek and the phone number in this preparative plan. Besides that, I'm very comfortable with it. Does any of the council members have a concern with adding Sandy Creek and their, their phone number onto this preparative plan? Okay. With that being said, the, oh-
Mayor?
Yeah, one second. Ken has something, and I'll go back to you.
Mayor, just an informational item. You know, I included this because the library director, Diane Adams, did a good job preparing it. We did talk about it at length at the last council meeting on the fourth, and the council intended to discuss it again on May 18th. So I indicated on the agenda that this was informational, because the intent was to talk about it again on the 18th. But, you know, if you're comfortable with this, we perhaps don't have to do that. But it's, it's a council decision, and I appreciate, you know, as, as Councilor Buller pointed out at the last meeting, she put a lot of work into her phased return-to-work plan that we had discussed on the fourth, and then this, at my request, was put into that template format again. And so I, I think she's done a good job. But if the council was comfortable taking action on it, I think you could. If you want to wait till the 18th, where she can be present and you can have some dialogue, that's perfectly acceptable as well.
And Councilor Buller, did you have something to add?
That was just my point. I know it's going to be on the next agenda.
Okay. If we want to, to sit on this one until our next meeting, that's fine, because nothing's going to be opening until after the governor's next announcement anyway. So if we're comfortable with setting this one until our next council meeting, we can do that. Okay. If everyone's fine with that, we will just set this. We don't even have, it's just informational purpose tonight. We don't have to act on that. It'll be available at our next council meeting with the rest of her, her plan. Next, we have the preparative plan for the police department. I don't believe Chief Mastin is on the call. If he is, please unmute yourself, and we can have that conversation if he wants to outline this. The, I was going to ask to him the same question that I had asked with the fire chief, is in the event that we have officers that end up riding together in a car with masks. And that was one of the questions I wanted to ask specifically to Chief Mastin. However, Chief Manassa did, did outline that each department is a little bit different. I think we're all knowledgeable that everyone is going to have to operate this differently. My concern is, as we move forward, even though each one of our departments is slightly different, each one of our departments is being handled, handles different missions, we all look to each other as one family. So if one group of people are riding in a vehicle without masks, why are the other ones being forced to drive without, or with masks? My personal preference would be with masks, but that is, that is a concern that I do have. So with that being said, since we don't have Chief Mastin on, unless Ken, do you have something to add to Chief Mastin's?
Mayor, I just, in my conversations with Chief Mastin, you know, we recognize that the physical environment that they work in, sharing space with the jailers, the sheriff's department in one squad room, multiple desks and stuff like that, so they make every effort to maintain social distancing from one another. Protocols right now are for the shift that is going off duty to actually stop and pick up the on-duty police officer. So they are in the car only during those times, during shift change. Otherwise, they typically, or they would be- they would be in their own squad alone. So they do undertake disinfection techniques for the vehicles, and the time that they would be together in a car would be limited during that shift change time period. We did talk about potentially requiring them to drive into work and stuff like that, and then there wouldn't be that. But he was comfortable maintaining it this way, again, because of the physical environment that they work within when they're in the law enforcement center, and the fact that they're going up and down from the jail to assist there when there's issues, as well as within the office environment. They try to maintain the distancing, but the mask would be problematic. And that was accentuated by Fire Chief Manassa's comment about the communications. You know, if you're responding Code 3 with lights and siren on, and you're trying to talk on the radio quickly, and, you know, and those kinds of things. So it just becomes another, is it going to be inaudible because of the mask? That was our conversation.
Well, and to the rest of the city councilors, and, well, everyone that's on the thing, working at Super One with all of us having to wear our masks now, when customers are asking for stuff, this is what we're hearing now. So I guess I can understand if you're calling in, you know, I guess I give that 100% credit to a concern. Being able to hear through a mask and a microphone is going to be more and more difficult. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept Chief Mastin's COVID preparative plan with attachments that were outlined by the City Administrator.
So moved.
Who was that? I'm sorry?
Kraus, moved.
Gotcha. We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Buller, second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Deech?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson, absent. Counselor Kraus?
Aye.
Counselor Buller?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, four zero. And finally, we have the Public Works Preparative Plan. As I went through this one, I, I, I thought it looked good. I just want to outline how we got to this meeting. I think we had a lack of communication as a council getting to this point. We, we didn't have an opportunity to see all of the, all of our preparative plans before Monday's meeting. I think that this actually has been a really good meeting to knock out the preparative plans, but I really think that we need to have better communication as we move forward, so that we don't get blindsided at a council meeting with putting together these. So I apologize. I guess I got a copy of this preparative plan on Friday, and I didn't think much of it. I just assumed it was going to be in our packet, and I didn't get my packet until Monday. So I do take some of the blame for the miscommunication going to our last meeting. But here we are, and we have our Public Works operational plan for the COVID-19, and I will open it up to Director Brokaw.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to outline anything specifically on your preparative plan?
No, not really. I mean, it's, I haven't checked since what you've got on Monday.
Okay. Does any-
Put together.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Director Brokaw regarding the operational plan? All right. Hearing none, then, at this point, I would entertain a motion to accept the preparative plan with the attachments that were outlined by the City Administrator.
Counselor Buller, I still move to accept it.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Kraus, second.
We have a motion by, or a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Deech? Oh. Man, I think I muted him. Oh my gosh, this is getting difficult. Okay, Counselor Deech?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson, absent. Counselor Kraus?
Aye.
And Counselor Buller?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, four zero. We have nothing else on our agenda today. With that being said, I just want to make a quick statement. We, we're doing the best we can for our community right now. Decisions are getting hard. I think both our community as citizens, our community as business owners, family members, neighbors, and definitely our city council, we're all torn on what the balance is between opening up our community and being, moving forward, and the human element of making sure that people are safe. And we want to balance that to the best of our ability. As I said earlier on one of our votes, we may have a handful of mixed votes, split votes moving forward. That is, that is a good thing, and that shows that our council is not polarized one way or another, and that we're having open conversations to try to better our community and try to have a safe way of moving forward. This isn't easy for us, this isn't easy for our community, but we're in a spot right now where we are in, we are prepared. I also want to let everybody know that may be watching this, that our city is in two meetings a week, if not more, with our hospitals, our county, and our school districts. Everyone is working together to make sure that we have a plan moving forward. And this preparative plan of coming back is just one way that we are trying to make steps to help our community. As we move forward, there's going to be more split decisions, and it just means that we all have different takes on how our community is going to move forward. But we're all on the same page. We want to make sure that our business community is taken care of. We want to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens are staying safe. And we also want to make sure that we have a balance of our economics in our community at least staying as a flat line and not plunging. We, we're in a tough time right now, and it's going to get a little bit tougher before it gets better. However, we're all in this together, and I just want to thank the, my fellow members of our city council, our community, our business, our citizens. We're all in this together, and we're all doing the best we can, and I want to thank everybody. I have, oh, Ken has something to add?
Well, I do, Mayor, and I would, I'm actually looking for a brief discussion and maybe some more direction and clarification for my part, from the city council as to how we move forward with this. And as you pointed out, you know, this is a difficult balancing act, and I want to just emphasize that this is a dynamic and changing process. I mean, the Governor comes out with executive orders, perhaps on a daily, you know, every other day basis. It just, it's very fluid, and it changes.
Right.
And so, based on the conversation that we had Monday, you know, I would like some clarification about roles and responsibilities for being flexible in how we make decisions, and if we need to make changes, is that something that we can do at a department head level? Is that something that I can do with, in consultation with the department heads? Or do we need to try and have special meetings so that the city council can meet to respond to differences, be maybe an outbreak in a worst-case scenario where all of a sudden we have a spread, and we maybe need to do more with, you know, staggered shifts, or putting, you know, separating workers and that kind of thing, and becoming more stringent?
Right.
Or if the Governor is starting to gradually relax this stuff, and if we can be less stringent, is that something we can do at a staff level, or is this something that the council always wants to be consulted and involved in the decision-making?
I love that question, because after Monday's meeting, I have been running that one through my head quite a bit, on what, what the city council's role is regarding our departments and our department heads conducting the day-to-day business. And I, I would like to see the, this is, this is my thought, and I'm speaking as one member of the council. I would like to see the department heads move forward to the missions that the city council are putting forward for Public Works with what we have going on with the Highway 53 project, with some of our CIP work that we have going on this year, and just the day-to-day business. What makes sense in that particular department, I don't think we need to be conducted on how they're managing the personnel now that we have a plan. And I'm going to let every councillor have a discussion on this, too. And the same thing with the Police Department. We expect them to keep us safe, that we expect them to do 911 calls, do whatever, whatever their missions incur, and how they move that forward. I think we, we guide what we'd like to see done in the community, but how it gets done, I think we need updates on how it gets done, but I don't think we need to be on the day-to-day basis of that. Same thing with the Fire Department and Administration. I think we, we should be guiding what our, our departments are doing and giving an idea of where we want to be in two months, three months, six months. But I don't think we need to be on the day-to-day, but I think we also need to hold the City Administrator and the department heads accountable to making sure that what the, the goals that we set are realistic. And secondly, that if they are realistic, that they're getting done in a timely manner, and it makes sense. But that is my thoughts. I would love to hear everyone's. I'll, I'll start with Counselor Buller, because Counselor Buller was pretty passionate on, on the preparative plans and how we move forward. So I would love to hear your thoughts, Counselor Buller, on this particular subject.
Well, after seeing all the preparative plans, I, I think everybody's done well in trying to put something together. I think it's great. I think the one, the one sentence that is there on the introduction to it, which I talked to Ken about today, is that make sure the department heads use the input and ask for input from the employees, and take some of that input if it's feasible, and if it isn't, at least explain to them why it's not. So they're working together as a team and not pulled apart. I'd like to see a skill, so that everybody's on the same page, everybody's going for the same goal, and working together with it. And I, I don't know if this preparative plan is that going to go into place on Monday then? Is that what we're planning to do?
When are we planning on putting these into place?
Mayor and council, my thought would be that the department heads would implement it as soon as it's feasible to do it within their department, so that we need to provide advance notification. Some of that's determined by contract, but, you know, there's been discussion, I think, at each department's, between the management personnel and the, and the employees, line personnel. So whenever it's feasible, and of course, the Fire Department's on-shift work, as is the Police Department, and I know that the Public Works Department, the Director has been very concerned and conscientiously thinking about options to have people start at different times, and so stagger starting times, stagger break times, stagger lunchtime, so you don't have everybody concentrated in one place all at once. And again, if there's multiple people in a vehicle, which we might be experiencing, is that, especially when the summer helps start, is that they wear masks for their own protection, as well as the protection of the public. So I know that that's been very well thought out by each of the department heads, and I think the short answer to that is it depends on the department and how the shift work works. But I would envision that we would implement this as soon as possible. And again, tomorrow's Friday already, we're past 5 o'clock. I believe the Public Works Department has to give 24-hour notice to people about when they're going to be working the next day. So I don't envision that department starting until Monday, but the rest of the departments, it would be as the shift changes occur, and the management staff can inform them.
All right, Counselor Kraus, do you have anything to add to that conversation with, that was posed by the City Administrator?
You know, I just have to say that I agree with Counselor Buller, and I, we trust the department heads. The only thing that I would ask is just, just keep us in the, on, on big things that need to be brought to us. And I guess my only, the only issue would be, is if we're going to rubber stamp something, we need a little bit of advance notice. But other than that, I think they're doing a wonderful job, and we trust them, and that's why they're the department heads. So decisions are going to need to be made. It's a prudent situation. It changes, as you pointed out, almost every other day with a new executive order, and there's no way that we can stay on top of it, or should we be expected to? Just major decisions, send them our way, and just kind of keep us updated in what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Deech?
Reiterating what everybody said, I agree 100%. Department heads should be allowed to make the decisions. That's what they're there for. That's what we hired them for. That's what we hired the City Administrator for. They should be allowed to make the decisions. On another note, dealing with the same issue on information, I do believe we should have an online committee of the whole meeting periodically, just so as a committee, we can keep up on what's happening.
I, I'm thinking that we, we should do that again, moving forward. And that was one of the things that I had been thinking about as well, is when do we start opening up some of our committees? Not necessarily just, maybe we start with having committee of the wholes with the city council moving forward. But my other question is, our other committees, our Charter Commission, our 4th of July Committee, our Citizen, or the City Beach Citizens Group, I mean, we're going to have to start having some of these groups meet, because they're, 99% of their work has to be done in the summer, or else we're, we're going to lose, especially for the, for the Charter Commission, we may lose two years of work, because it has to be adopted by the voters. So I think that's a conversation we should definitely have at our next council meeting, is what, what committees we open back up, whether internally it ends up just being our committee of the whole and smashing everything together, or, and what, how are we going to handle some of these other committees that need to do work, and how do we work with those chairs moving forward with the Citizen, the City Beach Commission, I don't know who the chair is out there, but we have to get them in the loop. We have to get Pete Kaler in the loop for our Charter Commission, have him start to figure out how he'd like to open up a meeting for the Charter Commission. We have a lot of work that needs to be done, and we, we've basically taken a two-month break from everything, and we, we have some big things that we're working on as a community. I think we, we really need to have some, some deep conversations, especially with budget implications of everything that's happening through this as well. So I do appreciate that, Counselor Deech. I think we do need to have a discussion on when we're going to start opening up those committee meetings. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So does that answer your question? We're going to put the faith in our department heads and our City Administrator to make those decisions, and we just want to be updated and be knowledgeable on what, what it is. I didn't see. Who didn't?
I thought somebody had a question, but maybe not.
Okay. All right. With nothing else to come before us, we will adjourn this meeting. I appreciate everybody. Thank you so very much.